Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
There a second?
Second.
Comments, Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, this week's bills include forty thousand dollars for tasers and equipment, and one hundred and sixty-seven thousand and nine, uh, nine-one-one passed through.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I have a motion and a second on bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports to be paid, there are none, to, reports to be made, there are none. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions for Carrie Dever? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for February two thousand sixteen. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. I have a very short list for you, um, but we have Kirsten Katmeyer, who I see has avoided the meeting at the moment. He's celebrating five years of service. Jared Ronas at the sheriff's office, also celebrating five years of service, and Kristy Astrolou, who's our webmaster at IT, celebrating fifteen years. So our gratitude goes to them, and I think they've all managed to avoid the meeting, but I bet you've catch Kirsten later.
Usually Kirsten's here, and usually Kirsten is here, so we don't have either of them.
Okay. And then for our county volunteers, for January twenty sixteen, we've included attachment, another long list, two hundred and sixty-three people helping us out.
Okay, and they're all anxious to go home today. Um, item number, thank you, Carrie. Item number six is applications for abatement. Kyle Helseth, and Kyle, I will just let you go through those numbers. Is that okay, or do you want me to read them all?
Well, it's fine, no, thank you.
We have a list of them.
Kyle Helseth, Director of Equalization. Uh, we have a couple applicants this morning for abatements. The first one is for a Heidi Skanky, record ID eight-seven-zero-one-one, in the amount of property, property taxes in the amount of two hundred and fourteen dollars forty-six cents. She had filed on the wrong property for owner occupied, so this is a correction to get it on the right property. The second one is for Linda Hanson, record ID five-eight-seven-three-seven, property taxes in the amount of six hundred and thirty-three dollars seventy-eight cents. A tornado took her property down. Third one is Benjamin Acker, record ID one-four-one-three-four, in the amount of thirteen hundred thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents. It was a commercial property that was raised, torn down totally. D, Katie Edgcombe, record ID thirteen-two-four-four, property taxes in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven dollars thirteen cents. Again, the property was raised. G, or E, I should say, is Jean Pfeiferlich, record ID twelve-six-four-eight, property taxes in the amount of sixty-four dollars twelve cents. Property was raised. Item F is Scott Kohun, and the record ID is eleven-seven-three-one, property taxes in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-six dollars twenty-two cents. Again, that property was raised.
We would look for a motion to approve these items A through F.
That's my motion, or second.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions for Kyle? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Item number seven is notice and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish notice of bidders for MC one-thirty, one-thirty-nine MS dash sixteen, the highway department annual micro, micro-surfacing contract. Is there a motion on that?
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for highway? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for the highway department's two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen annual highway materials. Good morning.
I would like to brief you real quickly on this one at least. We, we do this every single year where we, uh, let an annual contract for certain services or, or certain materials. This list has changed dramatically over the years. It's gotten really big and it's gotten really small. Uh, this year, we decided that, uh, we would further reduce what we had been bidding in the past based off of the number of dollars that we spend on it, on, uh, on an annual basis, uh, for our different items. Uh, this year, we have asphalt, ready-mixed concrete, uh, I'm sorry, these, this year, we reduced the, um, the items from last year by removing ready-mixed concrete, aluminum traffic signs, signposts, aluminum traffic signs with flashing LEDs, excavator bucket wear items, oxygen and welding gases, jackhammer bits, and guardrail. And simply, we didn't want, uh, vendors to be bidding on something that we knew we weren't going to be spending a real significant dollar amount on, uh, thinking that is a waste of their time, and, and we can simply go get quotes for those items, uh, when we do need to purchase them. Uh, all of these items, we spent less than ten thousand dollars on last year, uh, which is far below the twenty-five thousand dollar bid limits.
Are there any questions for DJ on this? Look for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion, a second.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, uh, um, notice to bidders, uh, for the highway department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPO number eight-seven-five-seven-eight in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one dollars, which was deferred from last week. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, good morning. Robert Wilson with the commission office. This is a, uh, compromise of lien application that you considered last week and deferred. There was some question as far as what the, um, court-appointed attorney, attorney services were for, and I just wanted to bring this back to your attention, that these were, um, services provided to a juvenile son. Uh, again, it was, uh, it's a current lien balance of a hundred and thirty-one dollars. Originally, the balance was two sixty-one, has had ma, uh, made payments of approximately fifty percent, uh, indicated in the, uh, briefing, in the application, that he, um, has extremely limited income and didn't want to, um, have this debt, uh, out there and, uh, upon payment of, uh, just under fifty percent, uh, is asking for a compromise on the remaining amount.
Is the applicant here? No. Commission, comments?
Madam Chair, you know, we don't done people for these amounts. We don't go after them, we don't charge them interest, and just because he doesn't want to pay it back, I don't think is enough reason. I'd also say that with an annual income of just under eight thousand dollars, it's clear that he's getting, uh, support to survive, and I s- suggest it might even be governmental support, and, you know, without any prejudice, uh, uh, you know, it's, I represent, uh, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand people who would like to get their money back, and I'm gonna not support, um, I won't support forgiving the balance of this.
Additional comments?
I, I would, I actually still concur with Commissioner Barth, is that this person appears to be an able-bodied person, and maybe they're not making a lot of income at this point, but there is no reason why we would, um, compromise this at this point. This lien is from August of two thousand fifteen. He has made a few payments. If he makes even five dollars a year, at least he's made some more progress. Uh, maybe his luck will be better, and he will have a little bit better job this next year, but there's no reason to compromise this by the information that he's giving us. He's not in a distressful situation, other than he doesn't make a lot of money, but we didn't ask him to pay fifty dollars a month.
I have a motion.
You can have a motion.
I'd move to deny.
Have a motion to deny, is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, deny. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is DPO number seven-two-six-four, excuse me, seven-two-four-six-four, in the amount of one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, again, Robert Wilson, thank you. Uh, as you mentioned, the applicant has brought forward a compromise of lien application for DPO seven-two-four-six-four in the amount of fourteen thirty-seven forty. The applicant requests a, uh, release of the lien in full with no payment, and there is no real estate transaction involved. Public defender services were provided between two thousand ten and two thousand fifteen. Number of partial payments have been received, and the lien balance was zero as recently as two thousand twelve. Since that time, um, county services have provide, been provided on three separate occasions, bringing it back to that current total. Um, applicant states he's recently started a new job and doesn't have the money to pay this lien amount. Um, I, again, he was reminded that he may make, uh, very small payments over a longer period of time, um, and he was not interested in that option. Um, it also indicates that at this point, he's, uh, looking to, uh, acquire health insurance as well, and that relates to his, um, request for this compromise at this point. Uh, lists total assets of just over four hundred dollars in the form of cash, checking account, household goods. Um, liabilities include credit card balances and debts owed, uh, just over ten thousand dollars. And he, um, indicates, uh, from, uh, information that provi, provided, that, uh, had a two thousand fourteen income of just under seventeen thousand dollars. Again, I, I submit this for your, your consideration with the request that was provided and, and, uh, just, that he discussed with, with our office.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Applicant is not here. Questions or comments on the commission side?
Here again is a public defender class that, uh, which is, I think, considerably different than rent subsidies or poor, poor relief, and I will not support this either.
Madam Chair, I'd also point out that these, uh, char, most recent charges are from October and November of last year, just a couple of months ago. Um, you know, this applicant, uh, could make some small payments and come back in a few months, might be different, but it's, again, we're not, we're not calling them up at work and, uh, trying to garnish their salaries or anything. Make a motion to deny.
Second.
Motion deny. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go on with regular business. Item number to, ten is consider a resolution designating Minnehaha County, Minnehaha County Highway one-twenty-five between Interstate two-twenty-nine and County Highways one-thirty as a Jim Zweep Memorial Highway. Jeff Barth.
Well, Madam Chair, um, I have support, but they, they're afraid to come forward. So, um...
That would be a first.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I never actually served with, uh, Jim Zweep, but I, I sat in the audience here, uh, for a couple of years, actually listening to, uh, uh, him and the, and the commission transact business. And, uh, you know, I, uh, he really had an extraordinary feeling for our county highways, and so I'm proposing a resolution to designate a county highway as Jim Zweep Memorial Highway, and I have a resolution to read.
Read that.
Whereas Jim Zweep enjoyed serving as a Minnehaha County Commissioner from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand eighty-six, two thousand eight, two thousand and six, and whereas Commissioner Zweep advocated relentlessly for improving Minnehaha County highway system, and whereas under Commissioner Zweep's leadership, Minnehaha County hard-surfaced all thorough roadways within its jurisdiction, a feat claimed by no other county in our state. And whereas the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners wishes to commemorate Commissioner Zweep's dedication and service to our county, now therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners that Minnehaha County Highway one-twenty-five is hereby designated as the Jim Zweep Memorial Highway, and be it further resolved that the Minnehaha County Highway Department is directed to erect suitable signs designating Minnehaha County Highway one-twenty-five as the Jim Zweep Memorial Highway. And therefore be it further resolved that the erection of such signs shall be within the guidelines prescribed by the manual and uniform traffic control devices, and be it further resolved that the Appalachian Jim Zweep Memorial Highway, uh, provided for in this resolution is for honorary purposes only, and nothing contained therein shall be construed as requiring the alteration of addresses or the governmental system for assigning addresses, uh, in any county municipal or other governmental entity affected by this resolution. Be it further resolved that nothing contained in this resolution shall be construed as requiring the alteration of any previously named segment or segments of any highway, uh, described in this resolution as the Jim Zweep Memorial Highway dated nine February... Well, I'm sorry, dated February twenty sixteen.
And, uh, Robert brought it up on the screen where it is, it's a little yellow highlighted area right there. It's kind of a short round.
And I guess, uh, uh, again, I would invite, uh, the two, uh, people behind me to come forward and reminisce for a moment. And, you know, honestly, uh, I, it was, uh, in a sense, before my time, before I became a commissioner, and how soon we forget, but at the same time, uh, we stand on the shoulders of those who went before, who built this highway system and who built this county.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I, first of all, my name is Carol Tweet, and, um, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much for your service. Love, uh, reading about you and hearing about you, you're doing great work in this community, and I thank you for that. And then, uh, Commissioner Barth, thank you. I just think this is just the most thoughtful, um, perfect opportunity for us to honor Commissioner Zweep, and I just thank you so very much, Jeff, and for inviting Ken and me to be here today, just to make some very brief comments before the blizzard hits us. And I, in chatting with, um, Commissioner Barth before the meeting, I referenced the fact that he and I both served with Commissioner Zweep, and I learned that, no. But Commissioner, uh, Barth sat out in this audience for years before he, uh, sat beside Commissioner Bennigan up there, so, uh, I was certainly confused about that. Commissioner Zweep did serve this community for twenty years as a Minnehaha County Commissioner, and Jim Zweep was truly one of the good guys. He, um, was truly a rural guy. He loved the prairie, and he loved being a, a farmer and tilling the soil. He was an unassuming, and he was a very humble guy. He never, ever needed to stand in the, in the spotlight. He was just that kind of a guy. Jim was passionate about county issues. I, I absolutely believe that he was very strong with public safety issues. He was honored to support the sheriff, who I think is in the room this morning, and, uh, he was so proud of the volunteer firemen in our rural towns and attended every single steak fry that, uh, they ever had. He, um, also had a heart for the poor and the disadvantaged, and I'm sure that you can appreciate that because much of your work in, involves those folks in our community. As a farmer, Jim's knowledge about land, uh, use issues was invaluable. He was often the go-to guy when we had a tough, uh, planning and zoning issue to resolve. But Jim Zweep's passion was highways. Getting, uh, folks from our small towns and our rural areas to school, to church, to work, was paramount to him. And each year, that, the importance of, uh, good highways was, uh, magnified as our small towns and our rural communities grew. And his goal was to ensure that he did not leave the county commission until all three hundred and forty-seven miles of county roads were paved. And he accomplished that. Hooray for him. So I just respectfully ask you to honor, uh, Jim Zweep's memory by acting affirmatively on the resolution that was, uh, presented to you today by Commissioner Barth, and that you designate County one-twenty-five, County Highway one-twenty-five to be named the Jim Zweep Memorial Highway. And if you respectfully do that, and once the signage is posted, I am going to take a little buzz down that road, and I am gonna wave and say a final goodbye to my really good buddy and a great county commissioner and a great public servant. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else? Ken, you want to say something?
Ken McFarland, fifty-eight oh five, West Thirty-seventh Street in Sioux Falls. Jim Zweep's always gonna have a special place in my heart. I had the pleasure of working for Jim, uh, all the, all twenty years of his service to Minnehaha County, either in the Director of Equalization Office or in my role as the commission administrative officer. In fact, Jim was the one who one day came up to the Director of Equalization's office and tapped me on the shoulder and said, "Hey, I have got a job opportunity for you." And he says, "And we would like you to apply for the commission administrative position." And at the time, I accepted that. I didn't know what I was getting into, but, uh, it was a wonderful, wonderful experience, and I owe that to Jim Zweep. One of the things that makes this resolution so fitting is that Jim's influence and policies that he advocated are still in effect today for the county highway system. Jim was insistent, like Carol said, that before he left, all of the county roads on the county highway system would be paved. But the other thing that he said was that, "And we're going to do that without expending one dime of property tax dollars." He was a firm advocate that we could accomplish this goal by using highway funds, license plate dollars, wheel tax dollars, and that's what would be used to accomplish this goal. And that, and he did it. And that policy still, as far as I know, still exists today, that that's your philosophy. And we're probably one of the only counties in the state that don't do that, that, that don't put property tax dollars for highway and bridge work. So Jim's influence is still felt today. I know Carol probably is not gonna want me to tell this story, but her and Jim, every campaign season, would go out and place campaign signs out in the intersections of all the major county roads, and that, I think it was probably against the law, but they did it anyway, and that, uh, because everybody was doing it back then. But one of my favorite lines from Jim, and that he would always joke around and said, "You know, I've had Carol Tweet on every county highway in this county." And, you know, so you could play with that and say, "Well, what did he really mean?" But that was just an example of Jim's humor, and that, but I would also ask you to support this resolution. Again, we are blessed with, with the results of his vision, his hard work, and the policies that he enacted way back then to make our road system what it is today. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak about Jim? Anybody at the commission have a comment? I'll just have to say, too, that, um, I think anybody that knew Jim, he had a special place probably in your heart. I stood on that side of the podium when Jim was the chairman and presented something, and Jim's the one that got me started down this road, Jim and Carol. But Jim's the one that assigned me a job working for the county as a volunteer, um, at a meeting, and that's how I got started, and that's where I first met him, yeah. So I think he does hold a special, special point in everybody's heart that knew him well, so... Any other comments on Jim?
I worked with Jim in real estate for, I don't know, fifteen years probably, and his dedication to the county was as strong as his dedication to real estate. He, he really, he was a believer in the commission, and, uh, I think this is a good move.
Is there a motion?
I can tell you that every, uh, week, he would come and sit in my office, and the first thing he'd say is, "Do you have a minute?" And whether you said anything or not, he just sat there till you, till he got his expressions completed. So it was always an educational process, and frankly, uh, I got to enjoy the fact that he would show up every week. You could just about bet that that's where he was gonna be. And, uh, he always had that look that, he knew what he was doing and why he was doing it, and it was fun just to listen to his conversations.
Any additional comments? Is there a motion?
Jeff, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to designate that highway as Jim Zweep Memorial Highway.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. I don't think Sandy's here, I can't see. Sandy's not here, is she? But we, I'd like to thank her too for sharing Jim with the county for as many years as she did. Twenty years is a long time to put up with a commissioner, so... Um, item number eleven, consider a motion to approve an update to Section V, county purchasing of the Minnehaha County Policies and Procedures Manual. DJ Boothey, good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. I'd like to present these proposed additions to the purchasing manual, uh, for discussion today, and, and probably some more this week, and then, and then approval next, next Tuesday. Uh, it's a pretty involved document, and so, uh, moving right to approval today, unless you all have taken the time to study it thoroughly since last Thursday, uh, it might be better to approve it next week, so we can talk about it some more if there's some questions. Uh, the focus on this, uh, the reason, the background for this is some project streamlining measures that we're trying to take as a department, uh, in, in order to get projects out the door, uh, more efficiently, uh, through our department. The section of this, although it is in the county purchasing manual, uh, the section that we've titled this is Highway Department Construction Projects, uh, with the idea that it applies only to our construction projects, uh, road, bridge-type projects. Uh, and again, in the big picture, uh, what we're trying to do is make sure our projects move through, uh, the process, without being held up at certain points. Uh, and I can go through this entire three-page, uh, document, but I think it makes sense to summarize in the last part of it. There's, uh, county commission approvals, and, and overall, what this document does is it, it, uh, uses the federal street, uh, project streamlining standards that FHWA has created, and it ties them together with the state purchasing laws. And, and right now, the, the way that the county purchasing manual is put up, there's additional, um, approvals that are required throughout, uh, the process, and so, uh, this kind of streamlines some of those, uh, in line with more like state law and the, and the FHWA guidelines. So, uh, going through what it, what it calls for, for the county commission approvals, and then if anybody has any questions, I can try to answer those. Uh, budget authorization is given, uh, for highway, uh, department construction projects during the county budget process. Uh, the county budget is formally adopted no later than September thirtieth each year, uh, for the following fiscal year, which is also the calendar year. And budget authorization is given, uh, for specific projects, uh, through the long-range plan, which is not, as, as I'm aware, technically adopted by the county commission. It's only submitted for, uh, discussion throughout the budget process. Uh, however, uh, beginning in, in two thousand and fifteen, uh, the highway department, uh, is, as required by state statute now, is required to submit a five-year plan, uh, which is very similar to a long-range plan, and that does have to be adopted. So there is an adoption process by the county commission for our five-year construction plan. Uh, and throughout the, the projects, uh, what we are proposing is that the county commission shall have approval authority for architectural and engineering agreements and amendments greater than one hundred thousand dollars, and, and that less than one hundred thousand dollars, the highway superintendent has the authority to execute those agreements. Uh, the majority of our, uh, engineering agreements are, are negotiated, uh, with our staff and myself, and, and are less than one hundred thousand dollars, and that's the first process. Uh, we go, uh, to the commission for approval on a lot of those. They're twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars, and, and, uh, a very routine action for the highway department and, and for the county commission to hear those approvals. And so we're, we're proposing that, uh, for those standard ones for us that are less than a hundred thousand dollars, that we take care of those on a department-level approval. AE services, they are a professional services, which are exempt from South Dakota purchasing laws. Uh, we've always practiced a qualifications-based selection process, and we no longer, uh, since I've been here, my tenure, we, we no longer sole-source as certain consultant. Uh, we work with multiple different qualified consultants, um, not with the intent of spreading the work around, but, but because we recognize that there's, uh, well-qualified consultants throughout the community, not, not just one that we want to work with. And so we use a qualifications-based, uh, selection process, which is, um, I would like to say is standard for, uh, for our, uh, uh, for our type of work. Uh, in this process, uh, the procuring entity, or Minnehaha County, evaluates and selects the most qualified firm, and then negotiates the project scope of work, schedule, budget, and consultant fee. and consultant fee. We don't ask for a price upfront typically, and that's not part of the selection process, but that is negotiated to a fair amount after the consultant is selected. If we're not able to reach an agreement on the fee with the selected consultant, we have in the past, we just very recently changed consultants when we weren't able to come to an agreement on the fee, and so we executed an agreement with, with a different consultant, which we were able to come to an agreement on the price. Moving forward, the commission shall have approval authority of construction projects prior to commencing construction, and so what we are proposing is that we conduct a bid opening, and then we bring the bid award to the county commission for approval that this project has met our budgetary, budgetary requirements, and we are recommending that to be approved for construction, and, and would like that construction contract signed by the commission chairman. And by way of this purchasing manual, construction change orders are on the approval of the Highway Superintendent. And the reason that we wanted to put that in there is because by law and by our contract, those change orders have to be executed prior to the work being completed, and, and oftentimes with construction, that would hold up a construction project up until two weeks possibly before we're able to make a briefing memo and go to the county commissioners and ask approval of a change order before that contractor is able to proceed with the work. That can really hold up a, a road construction project or the public if, if we have to go to the county commission for approval during a construction project. A lot of our change orders that we have brought to the county commission are, are final change orders, which are currently required by the purchasing manual, and that's just balancing out those final change order, or those final bid items, and, and making those as part of the actual contract. That's not something that is required by law. It's, it's a formal practice. Typically, what is done, and what we would propose to do, is that we balance that using our, our bid item spreadsheet on our final pay application, and, and that is signed off by both the contractor and the county prior to submitting for payment, but a construction change order is not executed as part of the balancing of the contract items, and that's what most agencies do. The Highway Department shall submit a monthly report on each construction project after the bid award until final payment has been processed. Monthly reports are typically proposed, to be typically submitted to the commission the second Tuesday of every month. And so, again, big picture, rather than focusing on multiple approvals throughout this construction process, you could say what we're proposing is more of a reporting method where we receive approval through the budgetary process, again, at the bid award and the contracting phase, and then we, and then we provide reports throughout the construction project, so the county commission is still very, very well aware of what's going on and, and in the know of, of how the contracts are proceeding. But as far as the approval process goes, let the department take care of that and, and ensure that the contractors and the contract is moving forward without any, any delays. So that's a lot of information. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
DJ, I haven't read through all this, to be blunt, and I, I would like the opportunity to spend more time on it, so I'll probably ask for a deferral, but the real issue is, can we get a contract that is redlined so that I can look at the differences between current policies and what is being proposed? And the other issue is, is that the Attorney's Office looked at some of these that comply with some of the SDCL issues? Yes, no?
Right now, the current purchasing policy is not being proposed, it being modified, but I can, I can show you maybe a redlined version of what is in the current purchasing policy that somewhat relates to this and, and what the differences are.
That would be wonderful.
This is like a total rewrite, a new section. Because I have that question yesterday.
This is, this is an entire new section, yes.
This is an entire new section added to the policy. That was my question yesterday.
Yeah.
So there, there's something redlined that's under something else, but this is the specific policy, and I'm the same as Gerald. I haven't read the whole thing. I did kind of go through it briefly. It's a lot of information.
Right.
My other concern would be, I don't know if he answered his second question. Did you have a second question?
And the second question with the State Attorney's Office reviewing it, we'll definitely make sure Kirsten is, is, okay, she can answer.
Okay, Carol Muller, Kirsten had conflicts this morning, and so I'm just pulling up the email he sent. He says, "The highway policies and procedures I have reviewed, and I have no legal concerns about what DJ is proposing, as it complies with state purchasing and contracting statutes."
Thank you.
One thing, as you're, maybe if this gets deferred, is to look at, is I wonder if it, at least, we should set a ceiling or something that maybe the liaison should be aware of, or do we want to give, you know, authority to just have $100,000? I'm just wondering if there should be a ceiling at some place, and it should go to the liaison and, and maybe to the chairman, or if it just goes to the liaison, and then with your weekly, monthly reports, those are updated as to where we're at.
And I'm sorry, I should have maybe included more of the details than, than except that last section. With all the change orders, with all the approval processes that we typically see today in a project, it says, "Within two working days, the county, the commission liaison would be notified," and also the auditor's office, because the auditor maintains the legal record of all of our contracts, and so if a change order is executed, then, then they would need a copy of that. And I said "two working days" only because that's what the state and the, and the city of Sioux Falls use, and so it seemed appropriate that we would have two working days to make sure that paperwork is, is moved around.
Although that's after the fact, right?
And, and that's after the fact, yes. Yeah.
Is there a, what, is the ceiling $100,000 right now?
The ceiling is $100,000 on the negotiation part for the, for the professional services agreement. For the change order, there is no ceiling amount, and, and the biggest change order that we've had has maybe $25,000 or something like that in, in the last four years, and there's certainly an opportunity, especially as we move forward towards multimillion, big-dollar projects, for there to be larger change orders. But that was where the critical point of, we can't really wait for approval for two weeks to move forward with something like that. I'm certainly not trying to avoid involving the commission in those issues. I mean, we have open communication on everything, and so the commission would absolutely be well in the know the day of, of something big happening. It's only that approval process for the contract to get that contractor moving forward.
I, I think what I was meaning was a ceiling for just contacting your liaison.
Oh, oh, sure, and I, my intent would be, every single time we execute something, that liaison is, is made aware of it.
Commissioner Kelly.
Can you give us an example of what a, like a $25,000 change order to an A and E contract would be?
Most, well, for an AE and E or a construction contract?
Well, this is just applying to AE, isn't it? Or is it applying to construction also?
There's, there's AE, and there's construction in this, in this proposal. And so for an AE, we, we have amendments to AE agreements fairly regularly, maybe one every five or something like that, and those are pretty small, but that would be like on, on our reconstruction project for County 137, we had a design agreement in place, and then during the, during the design, we had a public hearing or a public meeting, and residents said, "We'd really like to have a bike trail added for this, I think it's three or four block section." And so we went back and evaluated that, and we agreed that it would make sense to add a bike path along the side of the roadway. And so we asked our consultant for an amendment in order to design that, that bike path, and so they submitted an amendment. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head how much that was, but it was less than $10,000, I would imagine, $10,000 to $20,000, maybe something like that. And, and so that amendment came to the county commission for approval, and then they were able to move forward with, with that design. For a construction project, we, the, the vast majority of all of our change orders are always at the end of the project where we're balancing out our final bid items and matching those with the contract, and, and that's an unnecessary step in the project streamlining and the, and the purchasing statutes, but those are the majority of our change orders that we've executed in the past. The change orders that we do see that are legitimate, construction change order would be unforeseen conditions on a bridge, we see a lot of those where we go and excavate, and then we find the old abutment. And, and we had a sneaking suspicion that that was there, but you can't really put that in the bid contract because we, we don't know for sure it's there, we don't know how big it is, and so that's, going in, we know that's going to be a negotiated change order.
So this would expedite the whole project a bit?
That would, that would prevent them from having to sit on that for one to two weeks, waiting for us to execute a change order. Yeah, and, and the farmers really take notice when the contractor's not doing anything on our highways.
Yeah. Any additional questions? Otherwise, I, I'm not making a motion, but I would be in favor of deferring it to give us a little more time to finish reading it.
That's my motion.
I have a motion to defer for one week?
One week.
One week? I have a motion, a second, to defer for one week, just for continued qualification.
Yeah, I think that's a good step, and please call me if, when you have questions and want to discuss through, through some of those things.
Okay.
It'll make our meetings faster, right, if we adopt this?
Absolutely, and we brought this up to the department head meeting this month, and everybody kind of gave us our relief.
Yes.
Well, I do think, more importantly, though, on the, like the abutment deal you were talking about, that, that it expedites these contracts, and we don't have two weeks, because two weeks delay in a, I don't know, what do we got?
Protection season.
25-week season, that's a lot.
It, it is a lot, mhm. And, and with the contractor's scheduling, if they, if they start seeing us having those two-week delays all the time, then, then doing business with Minnehaha County is not going to be advantageous as with other counties or the state or the city.
I have a motion, a second, to defer for a week. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is an update and status report of the 91st Legislative Session on Bills That Impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson again. Things continue to move quickly in the legislative session. The style and form updates that I've chatted with you about previously continue to move along at a, at a fairly quick pace. Some of the other bills that we're watching are also moving as well. Go through a couple of them here, and as always, if you have questions as I'm going through, please ask me. House Bill 105, Act to Revise and Repeal Certain Fees That Are Established to Compensate Counties for Services Provided by County Officials. This is really the update to fees charged by the Treasurer's Office and the Sheriff's Office for a number of their different services to bring those fees more in line with what their actual costs are. That has passed House Local Government. That is up on the House floor today. They will obviously be watching that one very closely. I mentioned one to you last week that would change the public notice requirement for the, the length of time an agenda would need to be posted prior to a meeting, that would extend it to two days, where our, our current practice is Friday afternoon for a, a Tuesday morning meeting at, with the language as that bill was written last week and when I briefed you, that would have had to be posted by 9:00 AM Friday. That bill has now been hog-housed or completely rewritten and does not apply to local governments anymore. So that one is done as far as, as far as we're concerned. We have had a couple of new bills introduced that, new and, and that we haven't seen them yet this year, but there's some concepts that have, have come back, have come forward in previous years. One is House Bill 1129, an Act to Allow a Concealed Pistol in the Capitol in Any County Courthouse with an Enhanced Conceal, Carry, Concealed Pistol Permit. Again, this one is, is one that comes, comes up fairly routine. It, it's just been, been introduced, has not, it's been referred to. House State Affairs has not had a committee hearing set yet, but we'll, we'll watch that one. There's, there's one bill, same language has been introduced both in the House and the Senate at the same time. In the, on the House side, it's 1156, an Act to Require Municipalities to Reimburse the Counties for Certain Judicial and Law Enforcement Expenditures. And it's, it's one that was discussed in, in concept through the, the summer study this summer, and the, the notes that I have on it is that based on a pro-rata share of the total county population, each municipality would reimburse the, the county for their share of total judicial and law enforcement costs. And so paid by the county in the previous year. On the House side, it's been referred to House Local Government. On the Senate side, it is going to join Appropriations Committee, because obviously that would, there'd be a financial element to that one.
Can I make a comment on that one? Just that our rural municipalities already pay our sheriff's department a fee every year for services.
Are contracted.
Contracted services already.
Well, I'd like to make a comment, too. That, that came out of summer study. It, it's nothing to do with any of the SDACC resolutions. I, you know, I, I wouldn't support that. I think, I, I think it's redundant. I think that, in the case many counties, cities of Sioux Falls pays 85% of those taxes anyway, and this is just a function of county government. So I, I, I don't know. I hope the SDACC doesn't take a stand on this at best, but we'll see.
Well, that, again, that one's early in the process. We will obviously watch it. Redistribution of the Alcohol Beverage Fund, that is up later this week. Carol Muller and maybe others will be going up to peer to, to testify on that bill. As we discussed last week, that it's been amended. It was introduced to change the distribution of that fee, which is currently 75% to the state, 25% to municipalities. It was originally introduced that it would go a third, a third, a third to cities, counties, and, and the state, that it's amended now to 50% to the state, 25% each to municipalities. 50% to the state, 25% each to municipalities and, and the counties. That's been, that passed the House, and that, passed the Senate, has been referred to the House Local Government Committee. There's another bill that we, we heard discussed, 105, Senate Bill 105, to enact, provide for the construction, renovation, improvement, remodeling, alteration, addition, and repair of courthouses, jails, and other necessary buildings. And this would, came out of, out of Cottington County, as they have some, some law enforcement and, and jail and courthouse needs up there that would allow a, an individual county to enact a half-cent sales tax for a specific purpose, purpose of constructing or renovating courthouses or jails. That one, that's early, introduced and referred to Senate State Affairs, and, and again, we'll, we'll watch it probably, we'll see. And then 109, Senate Bill 109, it's a tweak or a follow-up to the, some of the highway bills and the package from last year. An Act to Require Counties to Conduct Random Checkpoints for Overweight Vehicles as a Condition of Receiving Funds from the Big Bridge Improvement Grant Fund, the BIG Fund, that's available from the state for, for transportation projects. And this would, would require that once a year, counties work with, with the state to conduct a vehicle enforcement, overweight vehicle enforcement checkpoint, and it, it is a cost that would be paid by the state, so we have to, we have to coordinate with them, and, and they have to just make, make it happen for them to come in and, and conduct these checkpoints. Again, I've spoken with DJ Boothby about it. We, we have the, the state resources here in our area, and, and getting this accomplished probably would not be nearly as difficult as it is for some of the, the outlying counties who may not have a, a state DOT shop near, near their area, but it is, it is one more requirement that, that is being considered at this point.
The good thing is that requirement was not that our sheriff's department had to do this, that it's the state that is going to take care of that, and that was a big deal. It's not an unfunded mandate for us.
And then one last bill that I wanted to mention to you, Senate Bill 118, an Act to Exempt Certain Purchases From Certain Building, Bidding Requirements. And, and essentially what the, the change here is, is, as I read it, is that rather than having that, that bid requirement be at, at 20, the $25,000 threshold, that would raise it to $50,000. So we would just maybe have to just be a little, a little higher, higher amount we'd be able to contract for or to engage without the full bid process.
Any questions?
Robert, do you have any idea what the impetus for 109 was? Is there, I mean, it's a state expense, it's a state equipment, once every 12 months isn't very often. Where'd it come from?
I, I believe Valley is the prime sponsor on that one. I'm, I'm not positive. I need to, I need to check that, but I, obviously, the, the overweight vehicles can do a considerable amount of damage on our, on our roads.
No question of that. I'm just curious.
Yeah. I, I don't know if there was a specific case of a, a problem or, or a, a pattern of overweight vehicles. I, I don't, for lack of a better term, know the, know the backstory on that one.
Okay. Any additional? Any additional questions on bills? All right, thanks, Robert. And the liaison reports.
Madam Chair. I just want to say, I went to a play at the Pedigree Museum the other day, it was a blast, highly recommend going, although they're sold out for this year.
Thank you. The other liaison reports. New business, Mr. DeYoung, oh, I was wondering, Lynn, if you had anything to tell us about a storm, it's not old yet, it's still new.
Yeah. You know, I guess the area's under a blizzard warning until four AM tomorrow morning. I know I've worked with both the sheriff and DJ already, you know, just on preparation, so, we would encourage everybody to be safe, do the smart thing if you have to travel, make sure you have your winter survival kit, going south will be much more difficult than going north and west, but to take plenty of time, leave early, and be prepared, so.
Okay, thank you. Scott.
Scott Anderson, planning department, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. I provided a memo, sort of a year-end report from 2015 in your baskets last week, and I just wanted to let everyone know that we had a very good year in the planning department. We issued about six hundred and fifteen building permits, which was up about thirty-five, forty percent over last year. And as a result of that, I'm happy to report that we exceeded our budget revenue by about ninety-two thousand dollars, and that's something that's very hard to predict because, you know, it's based on the building economy and what, how that's going in not only Sioux Falls, but also our surrounding communities. Along with that information that I provided with you last week, I also, we put together population projections for Minnehaha County. That information is then posted to the web, because many of our departments use that for grant reasons, for population estimates and whatnot, and the population projection as of what we would suppose to be the population around January first for Minnehaha County is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four people. I know that the city puts out their own population projections, and that can vary, I just wanted to remind the public and the listening audience that we have to remember that a lot of the growth that's occurring in Sioux Falls occurs south of Fifty-seventh, and that is in a different county, so what would appear to be, you know, that affects our population number for Minnehaha County. And then, lastly, I also, as part of that information that we gather for population estimates, we collect all the information from our little, from our smaller communities, and some of them are little, like Brandon and Hartford, but the, we collect, we gather all of the building permit information for them on new housing starts, and then we compile that, that's what, that's part of the information that we use to compile our overall population projections. But I like to do a little bit of a year-end recap, so everyone sort of knows where we are, where we ended up for 2015, gives you an idea of what we might be looking at as trends for the planning department, and I'd be glad to visit with any of you or answer any questions that you have. A lot of the information's on the website, we post monthly our building activities, a building permit report that the public can follow, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Bird?
Madam Chair, it's not a question, but at our last planning and zoning commission meeting, we elected Mike Seifer as our new chairperson.
The report was excellent, thank you.
Well, thanks, it was just a lot of information.
It was a lot of information, it was excellent.
Thanks.
Is there any other new business? Got another one here.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kyle Halseth, Director of Equalization. I hate to piggyback off Scott, but I guess a State of the Union address is due. We've experienced a rather extraordinary year in 2015. We've added over a thousand new properties. It's the best year ever. With that being said, as of this morning, we have increased the value in Minnehaha County just about six hundred and fifty million dollars from new construction and reappraisals. And it was kind of a surprising figure when I ran it this morning, in that the county now is worth over fourteen billion dollars. That's gone up four billion dollars in the last six years. So, the growth is just extraordinary. You also received, I believe, a email from me listing out what taxes went up and went down. That was surprising to me in that we had people inquire, "Why did my taxes go down?" So, I took a look at everybody's that was out there, and you received basically the culmination of that report. Thirty percent of taxpayers in Minnehaha County, their taxes went down. And that really...
Are they complaining?
They are. It's one of the reasons why I don't like to make a projection on a tax increase based on the opt-out. You just don't know. So, with that being said, we've actually had a couple of people wonder what happened, why didn't it happen the year before? But it's an interesting concept, if you have any questions, please ask them. It's, the boards of equalization should be interesting this year, in that Lincoln County has raised the city of Sioux Falls' value south of Fifty-seventh Street, close to a billion dollars. Some instances, it's gone up sixty percent.
And that reason being is that they were improperly assessed.
That's correct.
And so, they have raised them to be competitive, or whatever you want to call it, with Minnehaha County and the state, where they should be.
That's very correct, yes.
So, it's not because, not because they just did it.
Boards of equalization, excuse me, should be interesting this year.
Yeah. I will also say that the CPI for this year is zero, so we're very glad to see that there's some growth in the county. Commissioner Kelly.
I don't, and I don't know if this were you or for Carol, but we cannot use the valuation increases in our, against the percentage increase on the revenue, is that correct?
We cannot use the reappraisal values. And so far, out of that reappraisal value, we've got, and I'm, I won't know the final values to this afternoon, we have approximately three hundred and seventy-five million dollars in brand-new construction. The remainder, to get it up to six hundred...
And that we can use.
That we can use. Now, what that's going to be a percentage of, I'll have to wait until the discretionary formula values are pulled off, the tax incremental financing districts, there's just a lot of things that dance around that number, but it has been an extraordinary year, and thanks to Scott, thanks to the city of Sioux Falls, say a thousand new properties. It's just unbelievable.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle?
Thank you.
Is there any old business? Then I would look for a motion for executive session with personnel and contracts.
That's my motion.
Second. My motion, and a second to dismiss. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Did you get my email about Senate Bill 76?
I got the bill, so I don't think it's here. Sorry. Oh, they didn't go down. Gene and Dick need to pass that or sign that. I wasn't paying any attention to it. Oh, yep, I'll have to grab Dick, too.
Five hundred and fifty feet instead of five.
Thank you, yep, yep. Oh, you're watching me, aren't you?